And I've done, I've done really good with my.
Okay, I've got seven oh one now. We're beginning our meeting with Pledge Your Flag.
Pledge your flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have advertised for seven o'clock to have a public hearing on the FY 215-216 budget ordinance number three ten dash C. Is there anyone here with any questions or anything regarding the budget? Anyone here for the public hearing for the budget? Anyone here for public hearing for the budget? Are you hearing none? We'll go ahead and open our meeting. Hopefully councils had a chance to read over the minutes and operating statements. If so, in line for a motion to approve.
I make a motion that we approve the operating statements, March twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen council meeting minutes, April thirteen, two thousand and fifteen work session minutes, and Quantum's financial statement for March two thousand and fifteen.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the minutes and operating statements. Are there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, is there any questions? Hearing none? All those in favor, eyes?
Aye.
Noes? Motion's been approved. Okay, we're gonna go to, this evening, we have our sheriff's deputy here, Deputy Brian. And Brian, if you want to get up, I don't want to mess up your last name, so I'll let you introduce yourself.
Kalusi.
Kalusi, okay.
So, I just wanted to, just want to stop by and just introduce myself. I took over for Vince Pacelli for the area. So, I'm Brian, I'll be in the area. So, if you need me, just call.
[laughing]
So, if you need me, just, just call her and we'll see what we can do for you.
Okay.
Were you having to be the gentleman I spoke to about these trucks on Locust Street?
I, no.
Probably not, okay.
That might have been Corporal Miller or Corporal Timms. They would be our commercial vehicle unit. So, but if you want to talk to me about it, I can forward it onto them, yes.
They had someone setting at the fire hall today, but unfortunately, that was the time. Nobody was going up and down the streets, so you know how that goes.
Yeah, well, it's, you would probably come into play more than they would because it's a hit and miss.
Okay.
You know, it, they run it, and all of a sudden, they won't run it. But, uh, alright.
Well, we'll see what we can do for you.
Okay.
Well, I was telling, I was talking to him a couple of days ago, and I said that a lot of times, it's about around seven or seven-thirty in the morning, I guess, when they're coming in, and then they go out and they load, and then sometimes they'll come back this way, sometimes they'll go around the other way. But they usually make three or four trips a day, but it's a hit and miss thing. So. Been seeing you around town. It's nice to see you around. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to mayor's report. Don't have a lot for this month. Saturday, we had the board of directors meeting for MML. There's some things going on that you'll hear more about when the convention comes around in Ocean City in June. It's a, it's a big awareness that's going on around to the different municipalities right now about their bookkeeping and how their audits are done, in which we're very fortunate, the way ours is. They had a municipality down in southern Maryland, they had some problems with the, with in-house and a little fraud going on, so it's, they're gonna have some, probably change a couple of things around come the MML convention on fraud protection. So, you'll hear more about that at a later date. Friday morning, at the Shipley Arena, they're having a drug and violence awareness, nine AM to five. It's held, being sponsored by mainly the Carroll County Chamber of Commerce. They have a bunch of sponsors that are helping on this, and they want all the mayors, if possible, be there for the opening ceremony, to come up on the stage with the sheriff and the state attorney's office, the health department, and everything for the opening ceremony. So, the best part of the day on Monday will, or Friday, I'll be down there for that. And the end of May, the WRCC's meeting will be, that'll be our tour meeting. They have tours lined up for all day that day. Usually, our meeting's about two hours in the afternoon. That day, we'll meet at nine forty-five in the morning, and we'll take tours around the county at some of the stormwater projects that they're doing right now. And we have a project here in Union Bridge that we'll be coming to look at that. And I don't know what the weather's gonna be like, but they want to look at the tree planting at Cherry Branch. So, I guess we'll check all those out on that day. Right now, that's about all that I have for my report. We'll now talk about the FY two fifteen- two sixteen budget ordinance, three ten dash C, and we need council action on that for approval. There's, I think all the councils had time to go over this. Let's see.
I make a motion that we approve budget, budget ordinance number three ten C fiscal year two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and sixteen for expenditures and revenue of eight hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars, with the town tax rate to remain at thirty cents per hundred dollars of full value assessment of property in the town of Union Bridge, and the town personal property tax rate to remain at seventy-five cents per hundred dollars of assessed value.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussions? Hearing none? All those in favor, eyes?
Aye.
No, same. Okay, motions carry. I think we're pretty fortunate. We're about one of the only towns that's had a little bit of a decrease in our budget this year.
I'd like to make a, a statement. Sooner or later, we're gonna have to raise our taxes a little bit because we're going downhill instead of up. So, we've been holding on for a long time. So, we'll continue as long as we can, but, because I'm a homeowner, just the same as a bunch of us, as the rest of us are, so just prepare yourself.
Well, I'm like you, Donald. I think, you know, rather than trying to just hold off, you know, and we do this year after year, and we've held this at the same for a long time. But then, when you look at some of the, the revenues going down, now they're saying this year, hopefully revenues will go up a little bit. But, you know, we have a lot of infrastructure that has to be maintained, and before we let it get too far behind, it's something we should think about, you know, a couple cents, which, with a budget of this size, a couple cents doesn't bring you a whole lot of money. You know, you go a penny or two pennies, you're not really getting very much out of it. So, we got Dawn here that we pinch pennies as far as we can, and she's always cracking the whip at us, and we're just doing the best we can right now. We have a very small community, a small population, and, you know, as you get bigger communities, that's not always the answer either, because the bigger your community gets, the more revenue, the more resources you need. So, just something to think about. All right, John?
Okay, I have a few more or less update issues here. The first is that town on April sixth finally received the FEMA floodplain determination letter that we've been hearing about for about four years now. So, that sort of puts the town on the clock. Those FEMA floodplain maps, which by the way, are the same maps that were produced probably a couple of years ago. So, there's nothing new in terms of the, you know, the substance of the maps. But the processing has been done. So, the maps become effective October second of this year. The town was, as part of the letter, was instructed that it has to update its ordinance to come in line with the current FEMA floodplain regulations, which again qualifies the town for the floodplain insurance. So, it is important because the town has, you know, considerable floodplain area. Union Bridge, as you know, more or less piggybacks on the county ordinance. So, what I did was I contacted the county, and the person, the floodplain specialist now is Pat Varga at the county. You're probably familiar with the name Jason Stick. Jason, who we've been working with, you know, throughout the process, has not, apparently left the county around the end of the year. So, Pat is picking up that responsibility. And he advises me that they are working on bringing the county code, which is a combination of the building codes and the flood, the county floodplain code, up to speed. And we rely on the county, so we're, we're sort of shadowing that process, but that should more or less be done for us. And at the same time, I've contacted the MDE rep that sort of processes these things through FEMA with the hope that we could rely on our current code without any change once the county, because our code automatically adopts changes in the county code. But that gets a little complicated because the county, since we've adopted and codified our code, re-codified the whole county code. So, all of the references are different, the code sections are different. There have actually been some minor changes. And it is admittedly a little confusing. So, I think legally, our ordinance probably stands up, but I, I'm getting the sense that they'd like to see us bring it to date and make it, it would be a lot clearer if we pass an ordinance and we use the current county referencing in their code. So, we'll continue to discuss that, but really, it doesn't make sense to do that until the county updates, you know, the most recent changes, and then we'll know exactly what we're, you know, what we need to do. So, again, we have until October to do that. I'll stay in touch with Pat, make sure that that's happening. And I, I know it will happen. I don't know the timing yet, but I know they're working on it. So, hopefully by October, we'll, you know, we'll be confident that we're in compliance. The second item is the Comcast fiber optic line was in fact installed, and you'll remember, we required Comcast to provide us with an as-built survey. They did provide us with a survey, and I think you have a copy of it. But it does not appear to, in a couple of ways, comply with what we were looking for. For instance, it does not show the location where the, they board under Ladiesburg Road, which is important to the town in the future, just to know where that is. And they don't explain, although they've given me a verbal explanation, they've got sort of a loop in the line of up the hill when it gets close to the tower. And we had asked that they keep the lines pretty close together, within a thirty-foot pathway, just to kind of keep it all as compact as it could be. The verbal explanation I got is that they needed to loop around some of the trees without damaging the trees. They're gonna show that on an updated platter, at least we've asked them to do that. If that's the case, then I think, you know, that probably makes sense, but it would have been nice had they come to the street commissioner or somebody in the town and just explained what they were doing. But they went ahead and did it. So, again, maybe it's not gonna be a problem, but we'd like to still get the plat that shows all of this so that we have good reference points. So, that's what we've asked for. And I, Ned helped me with that. I asked Ned to take a look, see what he thought. He sort of agreed that we ought to do that. The line vacancy zoning administrator, that's really more or less a reminder that you have a, or about to have a vacancy in the office of a zoning administrator. And the way that works is the planning, under the, under your code, is that the planning commission recommends someone, and then mayor and council approves that person. So, you know, I don't know if there's anything more to talk about tonight, but that's sort of on the front burner now, I understand. And then there's one thing else that is not on the agenda, but I believe you should have a copy of the water appropriation permit that we've been waiting for. And that came in end of last week. That didn't go quite the way we expected, because we were told by MDE that they would send us a draft of that, and we would have the ability to comment on the conditions in the permit. But I think the reason for that is that they, the conditions that they have are things that we've already begun to do. You know, the permaloggers have been purchased, so that program is, is underway. The water usage and audit reporting is being done, so that's, that's in here. You all approved the water conservation plan back months ago, so that's in place. And what they did was they kept the town on a very short leash. They extended through November first, two thousand and seventeen, which is short as these things go, and they imposed condition twenty, which I think was responsive to, to our communications with MDE, which basically is giving the town that much time to do the testing, to identify the water loss, how much it is, to see whether the White Street well will in fact serve as a backup, which would avoid the need to put the Phillips or the Jackson Ridge well into operation. And, you know, we've talked about the fact that that's, the expense to that would be a problem without adding new users. So, they're, the way I interpret this is although they didn't give us a chance to really comment on it, I think what they've done is they've, they've given the town, even though it's a, it's a relatively short turnaround time, the opportunity to investigate and, and revisit this. And at this point, I don't know, in reading this, and we probably need to get it to Jeff at some point, see if he's got any comments. But I don't know that there's anything that, more that can be done at this point. I think that we're doing the, I guess we, in anticipation of this, the town is doing what it needs to do. It's gonna be a matter in maybe eighteen months or so, as we get closer to this November, two thousand and seventeen, to look at the numbers and, you know, figure out the, you know, which one of these directions the town will be headed. So, the bottom line is, the wells are permitted, and for another two and a half years or so. And that all will be revisited, I'm sure, early in, in two thousand and seventeen.
Okay.
Unless there are any questions on any of that, that's all I have.
On the vacancy for zoning administrator, I know it's the planning commission that makes the recommendation about doing some checking, because we have, with some of the other vacancies we've had around town, it's hard to get people that's interested in doing these jobs. Chad Green said that he would do it. He would do that job, so I have to get with the planning commission and let them know when they, they have their meeting, and see if that's okay with them, because they make a recommendation to us. But we had some other vacancies for around town, for the, the planning and zoning. And actually, people see me ride around town at nighttime. I'm not just being nosy, but I ride up and down the streets. I'm going house to house. I'm thinking, now who around here can we get to take on some of these boards and commissions we have? And, you know, you stop and talk to people, and, you know, I can understand, people have kids that are in sports and everything like that, they're busy doing things at nighttime, and other people have their jobs, they're just, they're just not, you know, when you have a very small community like this, you're, you have a hard time finding people that want to take the time and commit yourself to doing things like that. And then there's other people, they think their job is, they go to work, they come home, and they mind their own business, they're not worried about getting involved. So, so I'll get with the zoning, playing and zoning, and let them know who I've talked to, and talked to several people, but there's people that just aren't interested in doing it. So, I'll let the chairman of the planning and zoning know who we, who I've talked to. And see, Jarrett's not gonna be here tonight. I don't think we have any updates on any grants. Well, he's got a briefing sheet here about the Wetlands Park and the extension. I did get from the county, we are up this year for POS funding for this year. It's our turn. So, I guess we'll sit down and continue on some of those projects on that, try to get our next thing in line. The council has decided that as far as going for a lot of grants this next year, we're not going to do because of, grants aren't free. You apply for grants, and you, most of them, you have to put in your twelve and a half percent, or twenty percent, or whatever, and we're just gonna cut back because, uh, there's just not that much money in our budget for that. So, we're gonna maybe pick one grant that we think that we're really after for this year and go for maybe just one. So, that's what we'll be discussing in our work sessions for the next month. Okay, public comments and concerns, and we have someone here from Wyler's Internet, and I am not even gonna try to mess up this name, so I'll let you come up.
I'm calling the Macedonia in the back of the room.
[laughing]
I guess I need to turn this back on, I think. I'm talking with him free broadband. We're based out of Westminster. We provide wireless internet to people outside of communities that can't get Comcast cable or DSL. We're looking for partnerships with small towns. We already work with Manchester, we're working with Mount Airy. We're getting ready to be up on the technical water towers at Tawnytown. We're in the process of finding negotiations for that. And we're looking to, just to try to open a dialogue with Union Bridge about possibly using your water tower, maybe some other locations in town to help broadcast wireless internet to the surrounding community, and anybody inside the community that's trapped on a DSL connection that's inadequate broadband or can't get, can't get Comcast. We are sourcing it from fiber from inside Westminster, Hampstead, and Eldersburg currently. And we're looking for another, we're gonna bring another fiber line in from Tawnytown. This, the speeds are comparable to cable speeds. The cost, the price point is comparable to what people pay for Comcast cable. And we have a fairly big footprint in Carroll County. From the town's perspective, what we try to do is come as a partnership, not necessarily where we come in like Comcast does and goes running trees and things like that. We want to figure out ways that we can help the town by using our network to provide services to them as well as a kind of an ad hoc relationship. So, like, for example, in the town of Mount Airy, we do all the telemetry for their water, wastewater treatment plants at all their wellheads. So, all that stuff is reported back wirelessly to their wastewater treatment plant across our network. We don't charge in for that, they give us access to their water towers to do that. Town of Manchester, we actually pay rent for their water tower. They haven't found anything that they want us to do. Tawnytown, we're gonna do security cameras, telemetry, and we're gonna connect all their buildings. So, we're just trying, out here's public comment to see if you're interested in talking to us and sitting down. We'll come up and spend a workday session, let you guys bang us with questions. But like I said, we do know that this area, there are black spots where people cannot get any internet, and there's also where they can't get any cellphone coverage. We have to get the 4G that they get to pay so pricely for to get internet as well. And we're trying to provide that service throughout the community. So, if you guys have any questions, I can.
I think it's something we can probably talk about, and, you know, drop, leave us some information off. It's, you know, we're always interested in listening, and whether we can do anything or not, we can sit down, listen, and hash it over, and give the council a chance to think about some questions they might have for you.
Well, like I said, it was mainly just, we kind of mentioned it in passing, and people said, well, you ought to talk to us again. Okay. Because normally, we would've done a little, you know, so we, it turned out we were on the agenda, so we had, we thought we could show up.
Sure.
And at least say hello. But like I said, we're, like I said, we, we're looking for partners. So, like I said, this is, if it's not mutually acceptable for both sides, we don't, you know, we want to come here to make the community better. That's what we're doing. And we're working, like, for example, with the city of Westminster, with their Flyer on Jazz, we're gonna do public Wi-Fi during their festivals and be able to ad hoc put those up so that they can have, for, either for security reasons or just for their vendors to be able to get internet access. So, we're, we're open to almost anything. So, we can get you some information, we'll provide some stuff for you so you can see it. But like I said, this was more of a hello, how are you? We're free broadband.
Sure, well, drop us some information off, we'll be glad to look it over.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yep.
Okay, anyone else? Public comments and concerns? Okay, we're gonna go to committee reports. Ellen?
I attended the EAC meeting on the fifteenth, and the main topic of the conversation was the MPDES four workshop that we're going to be putting on for businesses in the area. We had a stormwater advisory council meeting on the seventeenth to iron out what we recommend as the main priority, our starting point, and two or three goals that they should work towards after receiving the KCI report. And that will be presented to the county commissioners tomorrow, I think at eleven-thirty, ten-thirty or eleven-thirty, I'm not sure which. And other than that, the next thing I have is May fourteenth, when we have the award ceremony for the If I Were Mayor contest. The winner for Carroll County was from an elementary school in, I want to say Hampstead. It was on our MML newsletter, but I didn't bring it with me. And then after they have the award ceremony, I'll bring back the ones from Elmer Wolf for us to look at. So, we'll have them after May fourteenth. And that's all I have at this point.
I'll be anxious to read them.
Laura?
I think we're just about ready to have Rod Key come in and fix the lights on Main Street. So, if you know of any other light that is out, we know that all the lights at the space, the statue are out again. And I think we have four lights on Main Street, one out here in the parking lot, and then, did you say the one by the sign is working or not? It's not. So. I need to get Jimmy and little get this. Statue, okay. Okay. And I have not been back up to the community center to see if that light is working. Have you noticed it's not working? Okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay, Edgar?
The new sign for up at Center had been purchased, so now we're waiting for it to come in. The other night, I was up and done a check of all the playground equipment and picnic tables, went around all the ball diamond, checked everything. I made up a, a list. So, I'll be bringing this up at our workshop session and, and try to get most of it done, because most of it's a safety features, so.
Okay. Donald?
Okay, Bill and Barb, the trail should start in a couple of weeks of getting staked out. So, I know you guys walking, so hopefully that'll, hopefully that'll finish half of the, our project. Well, I still have another half to go. Like Perry was saying, we've got approved for the open space grant. So, that'll help us some, but we still need extra money on top of that. We need about fifty thousand dollars yet to finish it off, the far as I want to go. And also, we are going to get a full-time, part-time person to, maintenance person. I spoke to Selby about a year ago and said that we were looking for his homeowner, and we have found him. He's Kenny Black. He's a local resident, was raised here all his life, been here all his life. And so, I'm really excited for him to start. I told Selby on behalf of myself and the town council, I appreciate all the dedication that he has done over the years. So, we'll move on, and Kenny will start on May the eighteenth. And I want to take this time to thank Lehigh Cement for donating a, an air blow-off station for us. When we're doing this coal patching, Jimmy and Chris are in the process of trying to patch some of these holes. And that blow-off station, it blows the gravel and stuff out. Actually, it works quite well. And also, Lehigh got a plate and put down for us up at the Hartzler's Funeral Hall. Perry has signed a proposal from Stan Barber replacing that line, that drain line's about thirty-seven foot. So, we got a plate over it now. The cone's gone off to the side, so that's good to go. In fact, as I mentioned that in works, in work session, that there was a hole there. Also, Stan Barber is, we're waiting for him to give us a, a date on when we can start some of this blacktopping. So, I'm hoping for in the next month or two, that will start. So, that's about all we got.
Okay. Amy?
Since our last meeting, I've only received one phone call about a sewer issue, and it was this past Saturday. And I believe Mike has it fixed, hopefully on Penrose Street. I was at the planning and zoning meeting on March twenty-third, and I hope I don't botch this. We have a new commission member, and his name is Josh Fuse? Fuse? Okay. Oh, right, April, sorry, not March. And he works full-time, excuse me, full-time at Access Carroll and part-time at the ER. And he, he's a resident here from Lake Nurse Street. And he sat in on the meeting, and he was very enlightened, were his words. Scott Graff handed out our two thousand and fourteen planning annual report draft. And it needs to be sent to the state by July first. And this report, it's just data and stats sent to the county from the town of Union Bridge. So, the commission gave Tom Long, the chairman. the county from the town of Union Bridge, so the commission gave Tom Long, the chairman, the opportunity to sign and send it out with, without any complaints from the members by our next meeting, so.
Great.
That's it.
Okay. One thing I did forget to mention, tomorrow night, at Westminster Fire Hall, I'll be setting in on a training, it's called Public Information Officers. For some reason, MML seems to think that all the mayors should have some training on this now, which I'm also taking it, also not just for the town, but I'm taking it also because I'm the public information officer for the fire company on calls, so I'll be taking this, been doing this for the fire company now for like, almost three years, and so we have a active committee, and we have some training, and some do's and don'ts, telling people what, what they can do on calls and what not to do. There's been some incidents around where everybody has a cellphone now, and you have firemen getting on the scene, and they take photos on the scene of an accident, and when you might have someone that's, you know, trapped in a car or things like that, there's things that yours should not do, and the same way with, I guess, public information that MML feels that there's some things that's public information, some things that aren't when you're dealing with certain incidents with the town, so some more training that I have to do for the MML. A couple of months ago, I did the other training for emergency management, so it seems like there's always something else they want you to do, and so one of these days, I'll have enough certificates to go wrap all the way around me somehow, but it's all fun, learn a lot, it's interesting, so. Is there anything else for our meeting tonight? We're getting better all the time. There's nothing else, we're in line for Germany. Our next meeting will be, work session will be May the 11th at 6:30, and our next council meeting, mark your calendars, will be May the 18th, because of the following, when our regular calendar will be, that would be Memorial Day weekend, so we moved up a week.
Number five, on there. After the motion was made.
Yeah, just make this, make it formal, that after the motion was made for our ordinance, that it will come in effect for, in 20 days, so just let everybody know that that will be 20 days from now. I think everybody probably knows that, that reads it, but it's official, so.
Okay, I make a motion to close.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to close and a second. Is there any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, ayes?
Aye.
Noes, motion carried. Thank you, and we'll see you next month.
That was short and sweet.